Cookville City Council Meeting to Order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Albright.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right. Consider approval of agenda as presented. Do we have addition, subtractions from the agenda?
We need to pull item 11.
All right, item 11. All right. All right, we have a motion for approval as amended.
Sound moved.
Second.
All right, any questions? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item two, we have a presentation by the Cookville Putnam County Chamber of Commerce. Mr. George Holford.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Shipley, everybody.
Three minutes, George.
We're gonna eat, no, Laura just told me that.
That's impossible. I know that's impossible.
We're gonna eat a little high on the hog one more time. I'm gonna give you, Laura's gonna give you a very brief report on our hog rally, and then it's a merchandising project that we have, and just want to say again how much we appreciate the partnership, and as exhibited by the hog rally chief, they were rock, the police were rock stars during this period of time. What a great program. Tony, thank you for helping out, and the whole city crew getting the fairgrounds and other things ready, but we're just, we're just really excited. It shows what we can do to bring more visitors and leave these dollars behind. I'd like to call on Laura Canada if I could, Laura to come up and just give some numbers about the hog rally, and then we'll talk about the merchandising project.
Yes. All right. Well, I think, I think, George, I'm not sure if you mentioned there was about 2,700 attendees. There were only last year about 700, so it's almost a four-time increase, which was huge. And with that said, by the hotel numbers, and of course, you know, well, sales tax and that sort of thing's delayed a couple months, but just by the hotel numbers, we know that Friday and Saturday night, there was about an 80% occupancy in our hotels, which is phenomenal, which was about a 78% increase over last year, same time, which, this is a time that we've heard from our hotel years, that it's really a low, downtime, Memorial Day weekend, there's not really a whole lot going on as far as people, they're traveling away, so it's good to have people traveling to Cookville. And then revenue was up like 84% over last year on Saturday night, so, hotel, hotel tax numbers, so, or just revenue overall. These, you do have a copy of this on the back of that sheet. And I wanted to read three quick testimonials, I thought really stood out from, we've tried to collect the testimonials just from people in general, from businesses and that sort of thing, but really quickly, "To the Rally Committee, the Chamber of Commerce, and all the people we met over the past four days, thank you for making Mary and I feel so welcome." By the way, this is a comment by the Australian, an Australian couple who traveled far. "The southern hospitality we were given has made this trip from Australia worth every cent we spent to get here." Wow, isn't that awesome? "We both agree this has been the best hog rally we've been to, we've been, we've made many new friends, and hope some of you can travel down under." Thank you, everyone. This is from a person from Hendersonville, Tennessee. "Home from an incredible rally, over 1,000 miles added to my bike, and a new respect for Cookville and the rest of the Highlands area." So, just, and one more, a woman from Clarksville. "One thing I must say, this was the coolest state rally we've ever been to. Thanks for a great time, it all went too fast. Didn't have enough time to do everything we wanted. A must-go-back-to-place. Thanks, Rally Committee and Cookville." So, again, that residual effect of people coming, also heard, I think it was from Gary, that there's a group from, from what city? Knoxville? Knoxville, I think, that they are gonna just bring their chapter back because they didn't have time to do everything, so they're gonna bring them back in the fall. So, just, again, the things that you just hear, and people are gonna, really, who never may have heard about Cookville, so, it's pretty neat. And, also, for the first time ever, the Harley Corporate actually awarded the Cookville community with the coveted Rally Knife. And this is, yeah, I'll pass it around, you want to? It's called, really, the, the, the Rally Knife Award, and it's a custom-made knife, it's normally only given to an individual, it's ever, only ever been given to an actual person for their impact on the rally. This was the first time it was ever given to an actual community for hospitality and for other support, so, we thought that was a pretty big deal, and we're excited about that. And now, on to, we come bearing gifts as well, and so, one thing we've just had a lot of demand for, and y'all probably have too, or city employees can probably attest to this, that we get a lot of calls for people who just want to take something back to their, wherever they came from that says Cookville. And so, we've had so many requests that we just felt like there was a demand for it, and so, Molly and George are passing out I Heart Cookville mugs, bumper stickers, and shirts that say, "Cook Vegas." So, we'll have to have you hold them up for a picture, but we do have all this merchandise now available at the Highlands Visitors Center, hoping that it will also draw more traffic and create more awareness of the Visitors Center.
Thank you, Vanna.
Thank you.
Wow.
So, now you'll have to hold them up so everyone can see, and Molly will get a picture. Just give that to Miranda.
Yeah.
Cover our face.
Yeah.
That's not allowed.
Shall we stand?
Yeah, that'd be great.
We'll squinch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. I was gonna ask, why did you bring George, but he had, somebody had to hand the stuff out, didn't they? I do want to say, I met the couple from Australia, and, you know, it's not just something that they were just driving through and happened to stop for a hog rally, you don't just drive through from Australia, but he has had a lot of experience with hog rallies, so when he says it's the best he's ever been to, that's, that's a pretty big, pretty high accolade. I think, is he right for, like, the hog magazine in Australia? He either writes for them, or he's in charge of hog rallies in a certain state in Australia. It's one of the two, but I had a conversation with him, and so, it was pretty neat to hear that, so.
Well, fun thing, I'll just put my little two cents in, I think the fun thing about this is we, we have the mechanisms, the processes in place that allow us to do more of this stuff, and if we, if we find out we need another process or something else mechanism to make it even better, we're gonna do that. We've, we've shown that we can do that, and I think that's a testament to, to private-public interests working together, so I'm, I'm excited about that. I'm looking forward to what's gonna come next, I think, and I think it's just got, we have more to come, so, it's an exciting time for me.
Thanks for the presentation, guys. And the hard, and the hard work that you put in.
Yeah. I'll be drinking my coffee out of that tomorrow.
Football was surprising.
Okay, on to, on to old business. Item three, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on June 7th, 2012. A motion for approval.
Sound moved.
Second.
Any questions? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item four, consider on second and final reading, ordinance 120506, rezoning 730, 740, and 750, Blackwell Park, from RS 10 to LM Light Manufacturing, rezoning 761, 781, 790, and 800, Blackwell Park, from CI to LM, and rezoning 1601, Blackwell Road, and vacant lot located on Blackwell Road, from LM Light Manufacturing to CI Commercial Industrial Mixed Use. Sponsor is Mr. Ken Young.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. This rezoning ordinance has two primary purposes. The first is to extend the Light Manufacturing zoning to the west of Blackwell Park, and the second is to place a number of parcels currently with split zoning into one particular zone. This is the location map off Blackwell Road at the end of South Maplewood 111. It's an aerial view. This is the existing zoning. This is another view of the existing zoning. You can see the zoning lines are split over multiple parcel lines. This was the final plan that was approved from Mr. Parks in April 2009, and this is proposed rezoning, the legend there to the left explains the colors and what's changing there. We have had this approved by the planning commission, and the department recommends for the council's adoption. We've had no calls or comments whatsoever since first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Do I have a motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments from the council? Questions, comments from the audience? All right, seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Item five, consider on second and final reading, ordinance 120614, amending title 18, Chapter 1 of the Cookville Municipal Code pertaining to water main extension and connection. Sponsor is Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and Council, this is the first ordinance that we had done some modifications on some language, trying to clean up some language, and then we added the sentence, "Water main extensions outside the city limits shall be at the expense of the developer or property owner," which you currently read, "except for capital improvement projects approved by the city council." I haven't had any comments or calls on this ordinance change, and would recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do I have a motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Any from the audi, yes, sir?
Oh, so, up here, or?
Either, either, either one.
I'll sit and stand by, 'cause I'm gonna ask you a question. Go ahead. I went back and looked at audits on the Water Department in 2009, 210, 211, and then, thing called net cash, in '09, they had $3.7 million, and then the next year they had five, and the next year they had almost $6 million. Now, I heard from the Herald Citizen that they're due some kind of increase, but I look at this like my mortgage, you know, you pay a little bit now, and then a little bit every month, and then hopefully it all adds up, but, you know, this is the last three, four years, this has been like the worst economy I've ever seen, and it looks like they're making more money every year. And I just, I'm not, like, I'm not a CPA or anything, but I'm just looking at this stuff and wondering, what's the deal?
Would you care to state your name, please?
Danny Newton. I live at 1445 Hillsdale.
Thank you, Mr. Newton.
Mayor and Council, you know, a few years ago, we did some rate adjustments looking at long-term projects, and the way we've done a lot of this in the past is build cash over time, and then build projects, drop our cash down, and that's what we're currently doing now. I think we've got a $6 million water plant project that we're funding in-house, and we've built that cash up, and that's what we've done historically.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any more questions, more comments from the audience? All right, seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to item six, consider, excuse me, on second and final reading, ordinance 120615, amending title 18, Chapter 1 of the Cookville Municipal Code pertaining to water connection charges. Sponsor is Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and Council, this is another ordinance change that we had proposed and went through first reading. We have made a, a change in between the, up in, in between the two readings, and that's gonna be shown in blue down here at the bottom. We've changed, and there it is for water connection charges within subdivisions where the meter system has been installed at the expense of the developer, including the box and service line of the customer's property shall be one-half of the above charge. That's the way the ordinance currently did read, and we have changed that to $350, which we think we'll be able to collect our cost during our conversations with you guys. We'd like to track that for about a year, just to make sure that's a justifiable number, but we think it is, and would recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do I have a motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kelly, the reason we're tracking this, we, reasons we talked about that, is just to, is to ascertain if this is gonna have a negative effect, what kind of effect it's gonna have, and certainly if it has a negative effect, this, I, not speaking for the entire council, but I know in my seat that I sit, that we would certainly rectify anything that would certainly hinder development, so I think isn't, that's the reason that I'm gonna vote this way, and I appreciate your department's gonna be able to take a look at that and bring it back to us next year.
Yeah, we took a look at it after this, some concerns came up, since it was written at half price, and since the meter price was going up, it was gonna increase that pretty much significantly, so we took a look at that and thought that's a reasonable request to do that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
Thank you. Yeah, when we, I believe we started out with this, we were looking at some numbers on all the water connections, maybe water and sewer connections. I think it cost the city $140,000, some odd, something like that, last year. We took in about $80,000.
Yeah, that's correct. That's rough.
Some odd, yeah, don't hold me too, I rounded up and down a little bit, but, so basically we lost about $60,000 in connection charges and, and that sort of thing, and so our goal here was, was a break-even point, and so that's, that's getting us closer to it.
On the chart I gave you guys, you can see what we're collecting, we're only recovering about 51% on the 5-eighths, 56% on the one-inch, and 54% on the two-inch.
Right, so that's, and that's, you know, the, if we don't cover our costs, that falls back on the ratepayers, and so, you know, the current customers will be basically paying for the new charges, and so, we just want to cover our costs is what, is what the goal is.
I agree.
I've got a question on, on item four, on the water connection charges within subdivisions where the water system has been installed at the expense of the developer. I think we have changed that to 350 instead of one-half, and I see in the audience that we have some people that are in the development. What is your, would any of y'all be willing to make a comment about that, if for or against? Is that gonna impact you that much as far as your ability to do something within the city?
Mr. Donnelly, you, that's your business.
I'm Tim Huddleston. I just make a statement that, you know, maintaining that rate as, as low as possible would be, you know, to your benefit, otherwise, they're gonna move to the county, and then from the county to the surrounding counties, so that's just the only comment, I just minimize that as much as you reasonably can. $350 fee, how much increase is that actually, Ron? 350.
Well, it's currently 300 if you put a 5-eighths inch measure.
Right, so, you know, you're only looking at $50, and I think you're really looking at opportunity, you know, trying to minimize that, and I think that's in the best interest.
Thank you.
Okay.
And, and just one more thing to point out, and I think we're all going through the same deal, you know, the, these are tough economic times in our, in our industry, development slash building industry, and, you know, every penny counts, if we, if the, if the increase on a house is $1,000, how many people does that take out of the market? And that affects every single one of us every day.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Any other questions, comments? Anything else? All right, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to item seven, consider on second and final reading, ordinance 120616, amending title 18, Chapter 2 of the Cookville Municipal Code pertaining to sewer connection charges. Sponsor is Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Okay, Mayor and the Council, this is the last ordinance change we were proposing, and it's basically doing with the sewer connection charges. A change since first reading is, in the developer charges, we had added in there to go to a half-price charge. We have changed that back to a $250 charge, and that is in blue.
It's right here. No, it's on the second page, right there.
Point out, I'd like to point out also, we've also required and changed the wording to, before someone, we would sell someone a plumbing permit, they would need to submit to our office a valid plumbing permit before we would sell down a connection and locate that connection for them, trying to correct some issues we've been seeing in town.
All right, Mr. Kelly.
I have a question on the 250 charge. How much of an increase is that over what is currently?
Current?
Isn't this another motion?
No, it's just a question right now, we're.
Oh, okay, I thought we couldn't discuss unless we had a motion.
That's right. Excuse me.
Let's make a motion, we'll discuss it. I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
All right. Questions, comments?
My question is on the 250 charge, how much of an increase is it above what is currently?
$240.
$240.
Currently, it's just, if the developer installs the sewer system in a, in a development, there would be only a, and a homeowner came in to purchase it, they would just pay a $10 inspection fee. We've taken, removed the $10 inspection fee, and then added a $250 charge to help recoup some of our costs that we think we're incurring.
Okay, so the developers spent all the money putting in the?
That's correct.
How do y'all feel about changing that to $50 fee, inspection fee, instead of the 250?
I'll make a motion to amend the original motion to change it to $50 as opposed to
I second that.
I have a question, though. What do, what do you do to inspect, whenever you go out to inspect this? What do you do?
Well, we have an engineer, our engineer will review all the plans, we have to approve the plans, submit them to the state, the engineer for the developer will submit them to the state, and then we will go out and do the visual inspection of the construction going on, testing, manhole testing, we will go out, send guys out to GPS the lateral locations, the developer will bring back a set of ASBells, they'll check, spot check those, make sure those are, are complete, and trying to think what else we end up doing. Guy will go out, when somebody comes in and purchases it, a gentleman will go out, make that location, and mark it in the field, and do that, and when you add all that up, we think we've got around that much cost in it.
Are you gonna be able to track this for another, for, through this next year, like you are on the water?
Oh, we can, yeah.
And see if we are meeting our costs anyway?
Well, I can tell you won't be meeting the cost for, if you change it to 50.
Probably paying more in gas than that.
How close is 250 to meeting our costs?
I think you're close to meeting your cost right there, 250.
Aren't inspections being done when the systems are being put in?
Inspections by our engineer. That's a cost.
So, why are we, why aren't we reinspecting our?
He needs to speak out of order.
I mean, that's part of the cost that we're incurring. If you're, it's my understanding, if you're a developer and goes to a utility district and puts in a water system, like in Gainesboro Grade or Bangin' Utility District, they're gonna charge you a 10% of your capital cost upfront for, for inspections and everything. We don't do that. We just provide that service, but it, it's still a service that's directly tied to that development. Does that make, I mean, is that?
Don's statements.
And then after that, you'll have, they'll buy a permit, which will be in the CO's department, and then they will go out and inspect the homeowner's portion that they tie into the, to their house.
If, if the fee that we charge, say it's, say it is reduced to, or I guess it would be increased from 10 to $50, and if that passes, and this does not cover the cost of that inspection, how do you make up the difference on that, then?
Well, it's just spread out through the rest of your rates. I mean, you, you still have to have X amount of dollars to operate, so you will make it up in volumetric charges or something else.
So, as a, when I pay my sewer charges, then, on my bill, then part of that would go towards meeting the, the difference as to what is paid and, and what is actually the cost of that inspection, is that correct?
Yes, I believe so, because we have connection fees, we have customer service fees, and then we have volumetric fees, so that's the fee structure we use to collect from.
Any questions, comments from the council?
Are we voting on the amendment?
We have to vote on the amendment.
Voting on the amendment.
Just for clarity, we have an amendment, we're gonna vote on the amendment, which is to amend the original motion from, change it from the fee to $50 instead of 250.
Instead of 250. Questions, comments from the, from the audience?
I'm prepared to vote.
All right, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, then we need to vote on the original, the original motion.
As amended.
As amended. Any questions, comments?
Sorry.
No problem.
I think we need a reverse rule.
I'm sorry.
I'm glad somebody else is stepping up to the plate.
All right, all vote.
Five yes votes, on the amended motion, as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Okay, thank you.
All right, on to new business. Hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, ordinance 120611, providing a tax levy for the 2012, 2013 fiscal year. Sponsor is Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, this ordinance does establish the 2012 property tax rate for the city of Cookville. This ordinance proposes a 5-cent property tax increase. The current rate is 85 cents per $100 of assessed value. The increase would move it to 90 cents, and that 5 cents would be allocated to the general fund. Basically, that 5 cents amounts to $345,000 in additional revenue for the general fund. The allocation of the property tax rate would be 79 cents, the proposed rate would be 79 cents for the general fund, 6 cents for the debt service fund, 4 cents for economic development, and then 1 penny would go to quality of life fund. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have about the property tax rate.
Do I have a motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Second.
Questions, comments from the council? Sorry, guys, we got a lot of paperwork up here.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no on, on the budget, and I don't, I wanna, I wanna make, just take a bit of time, if you allow me the liberty to explain, give my explanations why, explain why. Truly appreciate all the hard work that has went into forming this budget, and I want to let my fellow council members that this, my no vote is in no form or fashion meant to be divisive towards other, towards other council members and how you vote. We do certainly have a difference of opinion on how it's fallen out, and those, those differences, while they shouldn't be divisive, certainly are important. Just to put, just in, in just very simple, in just very simple fashion, I, I felt like in, for the entire year, that we were gonna have to have a tax increase with recent purchases that we've made and some things, some stretches that we've put on our budget. We've been very blessed and very lucky in the city of Cookville to have, have a, have a, have a revenue stream, revenue fund that we did, we did well this year, did, we did better than we have in years past, and that's a good thing. I simply feel that, that I am confident that Cookville can continue that, and will, we will be able to continue to fund some of these things, some of these things, as we have. I want to make it clear that my, my voting to no on the budget has in no way, form, or fashion speak negatively on some of the things that we are doing, okay? I just simply feel like... I just simply feel like, specifically, some of the increases that we're doing for our city employees, I wanna make sure that's clear. It just simply comes down to, for me, it comes down to our fund balance. I think we have, I think we have the capacity to absorb that without a 5-cent tax increase. So I agree with the budget in total, I just, I guess, I just don't agree with the raising taxes in order to fund it. That's all we'll say. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Unless you want me to say more.
No, that's, that's plenty.
That's plenty.
I guess I'll, I'll go next. The reason for my vote, too, will be a lot like Vice Mary Epps said, I just feel like in the last two years with our budget, we've made some pretty big purchases within our general fund budget, and still ended up with a little bit of a surplus at the end of the year, and I won't go into all the number specifics on it, but, you know, we were looking at maybe potentially taking out a bond for over a million dollars to purchase Heritage Ford building, and we have enough cash to do that, so we're not gonna have to borrow the money, which is a very good thing. And everything I'm saying here is because we have very good department heads that budget extremely well, and they don't just go spend money because it was allocated to them, they still try to save money. It's not a use it or lose it city by any means. So, you know, with all that being said, we've done an incredibly good job with our budgets, and we've been able to put a little bit of a fund balance back in as far as the operating budget's concerned, with some large purchases the past two years, still being able to do that. So, you know, with those things being said, I have trouble, you know, voting for the tax increase. You know, we've also had a couple of things come through our town this year that's, I think, I mean, we just had a presentation on the hog rally, I think, that bring additional sales tax revenue. We have a religious convention coming up a few months that supposedly will bring a lot of sales tax revenue. So I'm, I understand the reasoning behind it for sure, I really do. I think that, yes, we may need to look at that again, you know, maybe next year, but for right now, I'm just not comfortable enough with raising that, and that, again, speaks, does not speak toward any of the other council members and how they, they feel. We all have a little bit of a different opinion, how we get to where we're going, and that's fine, that's what makes it balanced. So anyway, with all that being said, I'm, I'm kinda with Vice Mary Epps. I, I can't quite vote for that just yet with knowing some of the numbers and, you know, I guess being a little more optimistic about the final numbers, too, at the end of the year. So anyway, that's, that's my two cents.
Well, the city of Cookeville, and in my experience, has always been very fiscally conservative, and quite frankly, as a taxpayer and talking to the middle-income taxpayers of Cookeville, Tennessee, not the folks that make six-digit figure, not six-digit, but I can't even add up that far how many digits that is, but way above my pay grade. Generally speaking, the overall feeling that I get from the middle class is the sense that we need to stay ahead little bit by little bit and not hit the constituents or the, the people of Cookeville with a huge tax raise in two, three years, or, you know, whatever. And I, you know, the cost of getting your garbage picked up has increased just exactly like the milk at your grocery store has increased. These things have continued to go up, and we are very proud of the services that we provide in the city of Cookeville, and we wanna continue that. And a few years ago, when the economy really dumped, you know, the first year I was in council, it was like, whoopee, we've got all this money. And the second year was when the economy went south, and the city of Cookeville tightened its fouls, kept everybody at the same rate of service, folks took no pay raises, and I just quite frankly would rather, as a taxpayer, see small increments along the way rather than come down and be four or five years and have a huge increase. Mr. Davidson, could you give me the figures or give us the figures on what that 5-cent increase would be on folks who own a $100,000 home?
On a $100,000 home, it's gonna be around $12. On a $300,000 home, it'll equate to roughly $38.
Okay. I'd like you finish.
I'm done.
Okay, my turn.
For this time.
I've just written some comments. Cookeville is growing, and it's our job to realize that services will need to grow and improve with the city's growth. Cookeville is no longer a small town and has emerged into a micropoloogy. The city's budget for the last three years has been based on no growth in sales tax and no increase in property tax, which I think was the wise thing to do based on the economy during this period. We, we cannot always wait for the, for the state or federal government to offer some type of funding or grant that we can make any improvements or at least maintain what we already have. We need to and should have improvements for our future agendas, and we should be proactive in our decisions. Therefore, I'm voting for this budget, a 5, 5-cent increase to the city property tax. This will allow for a 3% pay increase for city employees who have not had any significant pay increase in quite a while, and will allow the city to buy some much-needed equipment. The 5-cent increase will, on average, affect the city homeowners by $2 or less per month, so I think the impact for the, for asking for this is gonna be minimal, and I think it should be done. It's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Well, it's my turn. I think the thing that concerns me the most, whenever we look at our 30,435 population here in the city of Cookeville, but we serve as a region about 350,000 approximately, and when we cannot keep enough police officers because they are leaving and going someplace where they can make more money, or firefighters, or, and we do need to increase people in public works to help with, with different situations such as over at Dogwood Park and things like that, we need to make sure with the dog rally, the hog rally and, and all the different things that are coming into our community that, yes, are bringing more sales tax revenue to us, we need to have that protection, the police protection, fire protection, and everything to go along with that. And if we can do the, or the study, the salary study that we had talked about, which I believe is probably is in this budget, and then take a look at that, see where we are, how we fit with other communities our size, we will need probably at least 5 cents raise and, if not more. And so I just, I feel like that this is the time to get started on that. Let's be proactive and not reactive.
Thank you. Anything else from anyone? Questions, comments from the audience? Please come forward, state your name, and if you could keep it to three minutes, that would be great.
John Bach, big slumlord in all Cookeville.
Mr. Bach, would you go to the microphone?
Microphone.
Yeah, so, microphone, it's podium there.
So they can hear you on television.
Yeah, we gotta...
Oh, wait a minute, no.
Yeah, we're recording this, so...
Are we really?
That way we can hear you if you're talking online.
Okay. Just kidding about the slumlord thing. But anyway, big landlord in town, try to provide decent, affordable housing. I'd like to see the city do more for less. I go all around the city, and I see where two or three guys are doing what maybe, or three guys are doing what two guys would be doing, or what one of my guys could be doing what it takes two or three city workers to do. And so I think we can make some cutbacks there, and, and with some of that savings, we can go ahead and pay our policemen a little bit more and some of these other folks a little bit more. We can use more subcontractors. If we got a big old hog event, let's hire some extra security for that, or the Jehovah Witnesses come in here, whatever, let's hire and subcontract some of this stuff out to private services. The city employees do not need to do, and county employees don't need to do everything for the city. We can save lots of money by using private services, pay them, and those people will give you more for your money than city employees will. Enough.
Thank you, Mr. Bach.
Thank you.
But can I make an observation? My, my daughter and her husband just bought a new house in a, in a, in a, one of the satellite communities in Nashville, different, different city, and they have to pay substantial amount of money every, every month to pick up their garbage once a week. And the people in the city don't have to do that, and that, what they have to pay is much more than this tax increase that the council's talking about, and that's just a hidden service that we have, that people here don't have to, have to bear that burden. So I, I think that other people in other communities pay all kinds of fees that we take for granted here in Cookeville.
Thank you. Anything else from the audience? And I, I just wanna underline one other thing. Vice Mary Epps and I, we, we're completely for the 3% increase in, you know, cost of living increase for the employees and completely for figuring out how to pay our employees better. So I don't want anybody to think that we're voting, we're voting for the budget. We think we can get all that done without raising the tax, so that's what we're getting at. So don't wanna think, anybody think we're against that. So, all right, all that being said, everyone vote?
Three yes votes, two no. Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, on to item nine. Hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 120612, authorizing appropriations for financial aid to public service, nonprofit, and charitable organizations for the 2012-2013 fiscal year. Sponsor is Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, in your packets and on the screen, we have the appropriations to nonprofits and the joint ventures. I show the actual funding that was awarded in fiscal year 2011 as well as 12, along with what was requested for fiscal year 2013. What I'm gonna do real quick is just run through the ordinance and outline for each agency the amount that's included in the ordinance. And for the Putnam County Library, it's $325,000. For the Cookeville Senior Citizen Center, $47,530. Upper Cumberland Regional Airport is $28,000. $130,000 would be allocated to the Chamber of Commerce. $25,400 for the Emergency Management Agency. $32,417 for Cityscape. $18,608 for Cookeville Arts Council. $1,900 for the Cumberland Arts Society. $45,589 for the Tennessee Rehabilitation Center. $9,000 for the Cookeville-Putnam County Clean Commission. $11,407 for Genesis House. $11,407 for Helping Hands of Putnam County. $10,000 for WCTETV. $2,377 for the H.J. Stevens Center for Child Abuse. $6,000 for Kids Putnam. $10,000 for the Putnam County Imagination Library. And $1,901 for the Upper Cumberland Human Resources Agency for the Meals on Wheels Program. $7,500 for the Upper Cumberland Human Resource Agency for the Upper Cumberland Drug Court. And we have $1,500 for the Upper Cumberland Human Resources Court Appointed Special Advocates Program. $1,500 for the Cookeville Children's Museum. $4,000 for the Upper Cumberland Child Advocacy Center. $6,769 for the Tennessee Central Heritage Rail Trail Project, and $8,000, this is a new award for a nonprofit, $8,000 for the Putnam County Veterans Organization. Some of the funding, just to point out, in this nonprofit list, the $6,769 for the Heritage Rail Trail Program is coming from the Quality of Life Fund. And then of the $130,000 for the chamber, 50 of that would be designated for the Highlands Initiative, 50 would be designated for the Sports Council, and that, that, those 250, that $100,000 is coming from the Economic Development Fund. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Do I have motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments from the council? Questions, comments from the audience? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Item 10, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 120613, make appropriations for the various funds, departments, and agencies of the city of Cookeville for the 2012-2013 fiscal year. Sponsor is Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, I have a number of slides to go through. I'll be as quick as I can. Stop me at any point when you have a question, but I'll try to move through them as quickly as I can. This, this proposed budget for appropriations in the general fund is based off the 5-cent property tax increase. So right now, just to kinda give you a quick summary, it includes $22,626,220 in operating revenue. There's $350,000 that right now is budgeted as a contribution from CRMC for the Seventh Street project. $141,000 that we have requested from E911 to help with converting our two-way radio systems over to digital system for city forces. Also inside of this is reserve funds, $27,004, which was confiscated, it's proceeds from confiscated weapons that were sold by the police department. That money would be used for the conversion to the digital radio system. It includes $6,769 in transfer in from the Quality of Life Fund, again, for the rail trail project. $50,000 for the Highlands Initiative and $50,000 for the Sports Council. That 50, both of those come in now the Economic Development Fund. So total revenue, when you factor all that in, is $23,250,993. We have budgeted operating expenditures of $21,73, $73,368. Again, $730,555 in total to the nonprofits. Inside of this budget is also $1,285,955 in capital. Of that capital, 350 of that is the Seventh Street Project, which is funded by the hospital. We have transfers out to other funds that we have, $3,000 for the Tree Board and $64,220 in transfers for the Animal Control Fund. All of this, total expenditures, $23,157,098. Based on that, it leaves us with a $93,000, $93,894 budgeted surplus. It includes some items that we've talked about. We've talked about different scenarios and different budgets the last few weeks. It does include a 3% cost of living for city employees. It does have factored in additional monies for fuel, not sure what's gonna happen with gasoline, we have factored in that. It does include funding for the Compensation Classification Study to get someone to look at city salaries and see what is, what is happening there. We think there are issues, especially in public safety, and we want someone to take a look at that. So it includes funding for that as well. Includes additional funding for utilities, as well as it funds five new positions. It funds one, and it funds three right-of-way crews, three people for mowing right-ofways. We've annexed a lot over the last 10 years, we haven't added anybody to mow right-ofways, so it includes three positions for right-of-way crews. Those positions will not be filled until April of 2012, or 13. It includes an additional parks maintenance employee to help with the various parks that we've opened up, across the street, Dogwood Park, the different restrooms we have at Cinderella and up at the depot now. And it also includes another support services tech out at the Recreation Center for Leisure Services. In your packets is just a summary of all the capital. I'm not gonna go through each one of those. I can tell you that the capital is exactly as we proposed it back in May. I have added snow removal equipment based off of the 5, 5-cent property tax increase. I went back in some equipment we've cut the last two years for public works, we've added that back in. That was basically four salt bins that fit in the dump trucks to help spread salt. We also, that was $55,000 that I added back into this capital budget. I added two snow plows, which is another $40,000. And we also added, over at the South Jefferson substation, the police substation, we've been cutting some needed repairs at that facility, and that was $10,000, and I've added that back in. So the total in all the capital that's funded through the general fund is that $1,285,955. Again, based on the projected revenues and all the projected expenses that we have budgeted, we have a $93,800... we have a $93,894 budgeted surplus. Looking forward to June 30th, 2013, I have an estimated fund balance of $7.9 million. That's the general fund. I'm just going to move on through the rest of them unless you have questions. The rest of them, I have very, I don't have many, many slides for you. I'm just going to run through the appropriations for state street aid. It has a budgeted revenue of $957,344 with projected expenses of $953,000. $600,000 of that projected expenses is for paving around the city. We also have a grant that's part of the revenue factored into, into this budget, a grant to do sidewalks over on Jerry Witson, Mississippi. That's a $203,000 project that's in this, in this proposed budget as well. But total appropriations for state street aid, $953,947. Solid Waste Fund has a projected revenue of $1,447,000 with projected expenditures of $1,702,000. That's decreasing that fund balance $254,000 and projected to bring it down to $320,000 fund balance at June 30th of 2013. There are some capital expenditures we need to make, purchasing another side load sanitation truck. That's a $265,000 budgeted item, along with trash carts at $35,000 and service truck for the sanitation crew of $21,000, and additional dumpsters of $80,000. We've had this fund balance as low as $260,000 in the past, so we're comfortable with a $320,000, $320,000 fund balance. Next year, we'll hold off on capital and start building that fund balance back up. Our Animal Control Fund has projected revenue of $195,120. Potential bond proceeds of $900,000. The bond issue will be another discussion later with council regarding the bond proposal, bond issue proposal. But I do have that factored into this budget. That $900,000 would be used toward the construction of an animal, the new animal shelter. So factoring that in, along with their other operating expenditures, we have $1.6 million budget for the animal shelter. And primarily, the operating expenditures of that $1.6 million, $222,868 is the operating budget. We're looking at spending into that fund balance. They do have $488,000 in reserves from donations and bequeaths that have been setting in the Animal Control Fund over the years to be applied toward that animal shelter, the new animal shelter as well. So potentially, $1.3 million available to build that shelter. Not sure yet what that'll cost, but we have, that's kind of the plan at this point, to have that in place. And then we'll just see what the, what transpires once we get into the design of this. The Economic Development Fund has a projected revenue of $1,957,000 with projected expenditures of $3,340,000. The majority of those expenditures were, were the Highlands Business Park, the new, the new road, and the infrastructure that's being built out there. It's all being managed and handled through this fund. And we have the bond proceeds that were issued in December of 2010 are in this fund, and that's what's supporting the construction of that project. And that's the primary, that's primarily the majority of those expenditures. Along with that, we have expenditures for Lee Seminary Road, which are factored into that. But a total budget for Economic Development Fund, $3,440,000. Our Quality of Life Fund has projected revenue of $2,235,000. And that's kind of misleading because that's assuming the grant monies that we have been awarded for the construction of the rail trail project. It's all being managed through this fund. So as we construct the rail trail project, those grant funds will be reimbursed to the city, and that's factored into this budget. So those, those revenue items are based on the, the grant proceeds. One penny of the tax rate goes to the Quality of Life Fund, which is roughly $69,000 to $70,000. So everything else of that revenue, that $2.2 billion in revenue is grant funds, projected grant funds. Now, we have projected expenditures, $2,309,000. Our Debt Service Fund, which is where we manage and cover the interest and principal payments on all the city's bonded debt, we have projected revenue of $3,230,000. We have projected expenditures of $4,062,000, spending in budgeted a deficit of $832,000. We have a current plan in place with our Debt Service Fund is the fund balance, we're trying to keep that from dipping, don't let it dip below $1.5 million. And with the current debt that we have on the books and the plan that we have going forward, we're for additional, additional debt, you'll see that, just looking at this graph, this is assuming, just to try to show you that our, that we think our plan's working as we've got it designed, that we have potential debt issues in, in this coming budget year of $3 million. Possibly having to borrow to another $2.1 million in 2014 and another $5 million in 2015. And assuming those debts, those bond amounts are issued over the next three years, those amounts, it still leaves us with $9.5 million in debt capacity. And if, if we were to have to issue $9.5 million in 2016, you can still see that our fund balance does not get below that $1.5 million threshold that we've set. But we, we do have debt, variable rate debt that we pay. We budget that on 5%. The last two years, that, that rate has been below 1%. So we've been able to add to this fund balance instead of decreasing the fund balance. I still budget it on 5% because I don't know where that variable rates, debt's going to go. I'm hoping that trend continues at below 1% and we'll be able to increase this fund balance again this year, which will increase our debt capacity even more. But a total expenditures that are budgeted, $4,62,597. Basically, in the Water Quality Department, we have $13,738,000 in revenue that's budgeted with proposed expenditures this fiscal year, $20,570,000. Spending into that, cash reserves of over $4 million, leaving them with cash reserves of $6 million at the end of the year. The Electric Department has $56,497,000 in projected revenue with $57,248,000 in expected Their Gas Department has projected revenue of $9,495,000, projected expenses, expenses of $9,318,000, basically an $848,000 surplus, leaving them with over $13 million in cash for, at the end of June 2013. Our Employee Health Insurance Fund is funded through premiums that are paid by the city on behalf of employees, as well as the employees' contributions into that fund. It is a self-insured fund. We have projected revenue of $3,458,000 with projected expenses of $3,649,000. So projected spending into that fund, $191,000. I just got a couple more, and I'll be finished. I know this is exciting. Our Work Comp Liability Fund has a projected revenue of $514,000 with a projected expenses of $512,000. And Customer Service is funded by the Utilities, Electric, Gas, Water, and Sanitation. That has projected revenue, $1,162,000, and those same expenditures, $1,162,170. And the Drug Fund has projected revenue, $31,250,000 with projected expenditures of $30,350. Tree Board Fund has projected revenue, $3,3,540,000 and projected expenses of $3,320. And last but not least, this Cookeville Regional Medical Center. They've got $301,728,708 in projected expenditures for fiscal year 2013. And with that, I'll stop, and if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Any questions, comments, or motion for approval first?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any questions, comments from the council?
I do have a question. I think I know the answer, but I think others might want to hear. When we sit here and we see some of the, the cash reserves that are projected up there, and people are wondering, you know, what, you've got enough money, why do you need these cash reserves? Whenever you add all of these together, if we had a major catastrophe, how long would we be able to go, operate the way we needed to with our cash reserves?
Well, looking at the general fund, which funds police, fire, public works, the Leisure Services Department, Maintenance Department, as well as planning and codes, and then just the city general government, which keeps the streetlights on and the traffic lights on. Looking at the general fund, that, the projected fund balance is $7.9 million to $8 million. That's basically, it would allow us to operate for four months based on our current operating budget. We're trying to keep that at no less than three months of an operating budget. And right now, at that level, it gives us the ability to operate for four months based on our current operating budget. If things were just to go totally haywire, we would still have those reserves to fall back on.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions, comments from the council? Questions, comments from the audience? All right, seeing none, all vote.
Three yes, two no. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson.
Thank you.
All right, we skip item 11, go on to item 12. Consider approval of engineering contract for the design of the Bennett Road Extension. Sponsor is Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, this contract is for the design of the Bennett Road Extension from the U interchange, the Highway 70. This, this contract will cover the project management, managing the LIC funds and the design of the road. This is a, have to follow TDOT designs on this, so it'll do all of that, prepare bid notices, advertisements during the construction, it'll provide construction administration, and any other service we need to get the job built. It also includes field, field engineer, or surveying, basically anything that we need to do to get the road designed. What it will not, does not include, which we'll negotiate later after the design is done, which we'll find out more what we need, any geotechnical evaluations we'll need, any environmental studies, purchase of rightofway, preparation of any legal sketches or the, showing what property we would need for the road. Also, the construction administration and inspection will be negotiated in as well. The contract amount is $563,300, which was close to what we expected it to be, and I would request your approval.
Do I, thank you, Mr. Brown. Do I have motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments from the council?
Who's the, who's the contract?
I'm sorry, the contract was the Wisner, Wisner Company in Murfreesboro, Tennessee.
I was wondering if I just didn't hear that. I wasn't sure. I was like, did he say that?
I, we kind of, we knew, we heard that in the work session, but I knew you wanted a chance to make sure that they, everybody knew who.
Thanks for pointing that out. Do you mind just to kind of tell everybody how we came to that, or how you guys came to that decision? Because I mean, it was something that wasn't just looked at at a couple of different papers and.
No, we had a committee of seven people, I believe, and we came up with, I think, 10 criteria, and with a scale on value for each one. And everybody took their proposals that we have from about seven different engineering firms. And everybody looked at them independently and rated the ones that, what they, what they thought, how good a job they could do. Came back together, everybody looked at them, added, after we had totaled them. We had two that were real close that we couldn't really decide on, and we invited those two to make a presentation. After that presentation, the committee voted, and the Wisner Company was the one that was chosen.
The reason I wanted you to, to say that is because I was, I was impressed by the way it was handled. It, you know, it wasn't a bunch of people sitting around a room talking about, well, I like this one and this one. I mean, we went over the criteria, you handed out the packets to everybody, they went home or wherever it is they go to study, and, and they went over these proposals and came back, and it was almost unanimous, at least the top two.
Yes, that's correct.
And then, and then brought everybody in, brought those two in for an interview, face to face, and then the decision was made from that point. And it, again, even when it got to that point, it was almost, it was overwhelming majority. It wasn't unanimous, but it was, it was an easy decision, I think.
Right. I was fortunate enough to be one of the seven in taking these proposals home and studying this. I imagine I spent about two hours one night reading thoroughly, then grading these on a scale of 1 to 10, then coming back and finding the other six members came up with the same two that I did. Then when we got down to the two and they came in and did the interview and PowerPoint presentation, I believe the Wisner group came in strongest because of their ability to deal with TDOT. And my feeling was that they had the best people that could do rightofway acquisition, the most expertise of the two. The engineering and the construction, I thought, would be relatively straightforward considering terrain. The two engineering firms would be fairly equal in that process, but I weighed more heavily with Wisner's ability and experience with TDOT.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Anything from the audience? Yes, sir.
My name is Brian Paddock. I'm an attorney. Cookeville Resident Association has been concerned with this northern connector from the beginning, and I wanted to just comment briefly to the council before it makes the first major dollar expenditure going this direction and eventually has to issue bonds and spend a lot of money on constructing this. I went back and reviewed the interchange justification studies, and the original justification that TDOT offered to the federal government to connect something to the Interstate 40 was done in 2000. And it basically was based on the theory that Corridor K was going to jump off north of this connector and come up to 70 and go, go across someplace, and you're going to have this northern bypass. And as we all know, Corridor K was rerouted, and no northern bypass was ever approved. And in fact, in the interim, TDOT did a study which proved that it would be not only economically not positive, but economically disadvantageous to the city to build that kind of a, of a northern bypass. I've always thought that was just common sense, that people would drive around the city and not stop and spend their money. So in 2010, TDOT commissioned a revised, what's called an interchange justification study. And the, the assumption in that study, assumption was that there would be a northern connector construction started by no later than 2018. That justification study, in fact, does not specifically promise a connector or promise it sooner than 2018. That was what was submitted to the federal government, and in September, according to the press of 2010, there was a big ceremony. I guess some of you may have been there, and it was announced that the federal government had approved this interchange. That interchange, by the way, has been modified in design. Originally was to be a sort of a half cloverleaf system with only the loops inside the cloverleaf on the south side and not on the north side. Now it's just a straight diamond. And I'll come back to that design question in just a moment. But I've been asking TDOT in writing now for a couple of weeks to come up with the approval letter, so I could see if what's been told to you, that the Federal Highway Administration is insisting on this northern connector, or insisting on it in some certain timeframe, appears anywhere in writing. And I've sent a Federal Freedom of Information Act to the Federal Highway Administration, which it has not answered. I have sent a written request to TDOT, which has said that they're looking, they're looking for the paper. They haven't found it yet. I did find one thing. I found something that should be here in our local courthouse. Unfortunately, I found out about it late enough today from TDOT that I wasn't able to look for it. When you all did the condemnation to get part of the area that was desired for the business park, there was a litigation, and it was the Putnam County and the city of Cookeville versus Norma Fay piles Lynch. And that was that area where there were a couple of different members of the family, and there was a dispute and so forth. And ultimately, the city prevailed in a condemnation to acquire that area. a condemnation to acquire that area. In the course of that litigation, a TDOT official named Steve Allen, who was the Project Planning Division Director for TDOT, uh, submitted an affidavit, and he said he was attaching to it the 2000 approval, because he did this in 2008, the 2000 approval from, um, the Federal Highway Administration. So TDOT sent me his affidavit by email, but they forgot to include the attachments. No letter from Federal Highway Administration, nothing that tells us what the Federal Highway Administration is actually saying. So right now, you're faced in a situation where you're about to spend five, over half a million dollars, and you've been told by TDOT, but as far as I know, no one has ever seen the Federal Highway Administration approvals that actually say that northern connector has to be built or has to be built within a certain timeframe. And yet, you're being told by TDOT, you've got to get this engineering done because unless you put your money on the line and start this project, uh, we're not, we're not going to, uh, to go ahead with this interchange. Uh, and they do offer a small cost share toward the northern connector. I think one of the things that's at play here, and you all should be aware of this, I don't know if you've ever looked at the design information on that interchange. It's going to be the biggest interchange on I-40 in the entire Cookville area. It's going to be two bridges over I-40, each of which is three lanes wide. The connecting ramps are all going to be double-lane ramps for most of their length. In other words, there's a gigantic interchange. Now, that's only justifiable, uh, if you're going to have some kind of a huge road to the north. And that's why you have been pressed, and I know your, your, your staff has done an excellent job in pushing back with TDEC to make that a smaller road, albeit limited access. But, uh, TDOT is obviously interested in spending, uh, its money and federal money in a, in a huge interchange, which can only be justified if there's somehow, um, a lot of traffic to the north. I've heard, uh, people say that there's not going to be any need for that road, uh, literally in our lifetimes. And yet, the traffic projections, which TDOT adopted, notwithstanding its earlier finding that, that a road to the north was not economically advantageous to the city, call for 20,000 trips north and south on that road every day. That's what was told to the Federal Highway Administration. Now, I just ask you to consider that this is, this is part of the system that's driving you to a premature annexation of this area, it's driving you then to a premature plan of services and having to fulfill that in terms of infrastructure and services. And quite frankly, until I, if, if I were you and it were my half million dollars, I would not reach into my pocket and do that until I had sat down with the Federal Highway Administration and said, why do we have to do this? And if we have to do it, when do we really have to do it? We do not have this money now. We don't want to do it now. We don't want to use up our debt capacity, and we certainly don't see a need for this north, this north side of the, of the interchange, um, to be so gigantic as, as it is being planned. So I would ask that the council defer granting this funds and undertaking the engineering on this until it's really sure that it has to do this. It looks to me, quite frankly, from the non-response that I'm getting from TDOT on, on showing me what the Federal Highway Administration requirements are, that, um, that TDOT is, it appears to me, and, and I hate to say this, uh, that they're making this up, that the feds didn't require this. The feds may want eventually some kind of a small northern connection, but that the feds have never said, you've got to do this, you've got to do this now, you have got to start, you're doing your engineering now. And I, I would satisfy myself that, in fact, this was a federal requirement someplace in writing. And I would ask, as I think you have, Representative Black, to help you set aside any federal requirement if in fact one is found, because just like the federal government doesn't want to spend money that's unnecessary, we don't, and I think she would help us back off, or should help us back off, the Federal Highway Administration from requiring something that this community doesn't want and doesn't want to pay for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paddock. Yes, sir. Please state your name, and if you could keep it to three minutes, that would be great.
Danny Newton. Uh, I think you could have heard most of this if, at the last meeting that they had for, with the Planning Commission, except for the three-minute deal. But I've also been, uh, talking to TDOT and trying to figure out, why is it that they've got these connectors all over this state and, uh, nobody's ever thrown in a dollar? Example, O'Neill Road in Cock County, uh, exit 263 on I-40 in Loudoun County, which, by the way, is the real Highlands Industrial Park, the real original one before we got one. And, uh, I, I've written to TDOT and I said, how much, uh, uh, public money went in on this thing? And, and you can look it up on their website, you know, and double-check it, but, uh, some of these records go back so far, they don't keep them on the internet anymore. Uh, there was one in, uh, Wilson County, very similar to it. Now, the one up in Cock County, that was 50 cars a day, and it was a gravel road. And, and the one up in, uh, on exit 362, that, that thing, uh, crosses I-40 and dead ends on a body of water. It looks like it's a boat ramp to me, although just before you go down there, they, they do have an industrial park there. And they, they've, they've waited five years and they finally got a VW, uh, distributor to set up there, but they're not going to make enough money off that. I'm talking about TDOT. The state's not going to make, make enough money to get the 18.3 million dollars back. And so, you know, basically, I'm after TDOT. I'm, I'm saying that it's irresponsible to spend this money, and it's even more irresponsible to spend somebody else's money on something that'll never recover the cost. And, and, and there's, there's examples of this all over the state. And I don't, for the life of me, I don't, of course, you don't invite me to go to these meetings with TDOT, but why don't, why don't you point this stuff out when you sit down with TDOT? That's my question.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other questions?
I would like to point out that Ms. Melinda Kiefer and I and Mr. Brown did negotiate this contract with this company, and it does provide that the city can terminate this at any reason, at, without cause for any reason, without owing any money except what work is done, and we have things graduated in the schedule. So if this should end early, uh, it would be a minimal cost to the city. So that, that is in the contract.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rader, and Ms. Kiefer. All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number 13, Consider awarding bid for chemicals, Water Quality Control Department sponsor Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we recently opened our annual bid for chemicals that we use at the water plant and, uh, a little bit of chemicals we have down at the wastewater plant. Uh, I've got the bid tab in your packet. We'd recommend a low bidder meeting spec and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments from the council? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. All right. This is a portion of our meeting where we open the floor to the hearing of citizens and/or delegations. Uh, if anyone would like to come forward, we'll listen. If you could keep it three minutes, that would be greatly appreciated. All right. Anything from the council?
I just wanted to remind people of the concerts in the park on Sunday afternoons. I don't have a list of all of those, but they're in the afternoon, and they're usually in the Herald Citizen and on the radio. And also, the community band is, um, performing throughout the summer in Dogwood Park, and, um, those are well-attended and quite a nice event to go to free of charge and, uh, good way to spend your Sunday afternoon or your Monday evening if you go to the community band.
Also, this Saturday, you've got Wine on the West Side.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
I was going to get to that.
You better.
Uh, yes, Live Green 5K, WCTE Live Green 5K is Saturday morning at 7:30. Uh, it's the inaugural event, uh, looking for a lot of runners. Uh, we have a lot of good, goodie bags, I know. I think there's 48 or 50 people already signed up. Uh, you can still sign up online, uh, and you can come Saturday morning from 6:30 to 7:00 to sign up, pretty sure. Uh, but anyway, it should be a, a good run, whether it'd be before it gets too hot, so come out and support local public television. And also, there's some goodies in there, I think, to the local farmer's market that they're going to be giving away. Uh, so the run will go right in front of the farmer's market, so on your way back, circle back, and you can purchase something at the farmer's market. One thing I was going to read real quick, uh, you know, a lot of times we, we hear a lot of the negative, uh, about government and/or city employees or whatever. Uh, but we had a letter sent, uh, to Mr. Jim Shipley about one of our employees, and so I want to read at least part of it, uh, because it was a very complimentary letter, and I think it deserves to be read. Uh, I meant to read it the last meeting, and, uh, apologize, I forgot. But this is, "Dear Mr. Shipley, I'm writing to let you know what a pleasant experience I had today in a phone conversation with your senior planner, Mr. Kenneth Young." And I noticed he left. I wish he would have stayed. Uh, "I phoned him, I phoned him to request some information about a property, and he shocked me by bringing to my attention information that could greatly benefit me and my family. It took several minutes for him to do this. He cross-checked some maps and did some calculations on square footages and then patiently answered my questions and helped me. This is almost unheard of. He didn't have to go out of his way to research the information, and I didn't even know enough to ask the right question, but he took the initiative and showed he has a true servant's heart and helped me when 99 out of 100 people would have just ended the call and never given it a thought." I'm not going to read the next paragraph because it has a lot of his personal information, so. Says, "Thank you and congratulations to you, Mr. Shipley, for hiring him. He is terrific. I hope he stays with our Cookville government for a long time." Anyway, congratulations to Mr. Kenneth Young. Not only does Mr. Ken Young do a great job, but the rest of the department heads and employees do a great job. Uh, sometimes you guys don't get to hear that, so, uh, we think you do an excellent job, and we couldn't sit up here and do what we do without you guys, every one of you. So I wanted that to be public knowledge that he got, that he did that, and it's not just Ken. Everybody does that. So, anything else? All right. Rummaged through all my Cookville stuff here. Meeting's adjourned.